My name's councillor Sharon Thompson and I am the Cabinet Member for Homes and Neighbourhoods when it comes to housing, localisation and also the bereavement services. The purpose of this webcast tonight is because we all recognise, and I particularly recognise as the Cabinet Member, that as we're going through this very difficult time with Covid-19, a lot of communities are being affected when it comes to bereavements. So we decided that we'd come together today because we know there's a few questions that have been coming up in the community. And we have a panel of different people who have worked alongside the agenda with the council. And we thought we'd come together to discuss this issue for the community, for the community to ask us questions and raise their concerns and for us to share information and raise some of the challenges that we've also been facing. So the first person that I would like to hand over to is Paul Lancaster. Paul, can you just introduce yourself and just talk about the service and give us an overview please?
Thank you Sharon. Yeah, my name's Paul Lancaster. I'm the Assistant Director who's responsible for Bereavement Services in Birmingham City Council. We run one of the largest burial authorities in the country in terms of both cremations and cemeteries, burials. So have major responsibilities for ensuring all kinds of things go right in the bereavement process. We're in extraordinary times and I certainly must admit, I've never known us to have to restrict the number of people going to a funeral. One of the last things we wanted to do, but for the safety of both of those attending the funeral and our staff, we needed to do that. We believe the maximum safe number is six. Risk assessment on each of our cemeteries to do that. And we've made it simple. We've kept it exactly the same for cremations as well. We've introduced a new registration process for deaths. It is taking longer than the old process because actually the new process is an electronic version, but you still have to have a wet signature for every certificate that you do. So we then have to do that, then scan it in and then send it out. And when you're trying to work from home, scanning is not always easy. That's my brief overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Shabana, can we move over to you? Do you want to give your introduction?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Assalamualaikum. My name is Shabana Mahmood. I'm the Member of Parliament for Birmingham Leyton constituency. Since I've been a Member of Parliament, I've regularly had to deal with issues around release of bodies, registrations and various other bits of coronial services. So I have a long-term interest and specialism. I've been working very closely with the council, but also with the government to try and move as quickly as we can, not just on protecting burial rights for religious reasons, but also trying to make sure that the processes that we have to construct to meet the volume of deaths that we're expecting are fair and that they are fulfilling not only our duties to our citizens who will need the opportunity to grieve, but also to council staff, many of whom just a few weeks ago were working on highways and who now find themselves working in the cemetery. I found that the government is very willing to listen, although their own preference, from what the minister told me just a few days ago, is that the numbers are limited to the smaller end of the spectrum. And they will certainly be speaking to local authorities that appear to be allowing larger numbers of people to attend burial. I expect the government to say a bit more about this in the coming week. But for now, the position we have in Birmingham, I have to say, I personally feel is the best sort of halfway house between giving closest family members at least some opportunity to take part in the grieving process at the graveside and to give dignity to our deceased, but also to allow the council to fulfil their duty of care to their own members of staff who are frontline staff, just like the National Health Service staff and just like care workers. You know, the people working at cemeteries aren't getting much of a look in, but they are frontliners just like everybody else. And their lives are also on the line. I'll take away anything I can from the session this evening. If there are other things to lobby government on, I will be very happy to do that and work with the council in putting those points forward.
The next person that's going to speak is the Director for Public Health in Birmingham, and that's Justin Varney. Justin, over to you.
Good evening all. So thank you for joining us tonight. Unprecedented times. This is a serious situation. And when we look at the current context in Birmingham, the number of cases continue to rise. Now, we will always top the charts in terms of the number of anything because we are the largest council in England. As a rate, we have a rate of around 109 cases per 100,000. Now, just to put that in context of the West Midlands, that makes us the third highest rate in the West Midlands. But most of the West Midlands is tracking in the same direction. And the West Midlands now is the area which is coming up after London in terms of having the most cases. Now, the cases are the forerunners unfortunately to the deaths. And so we would expect the curve for deaths to follow about two to three weeks after the confirmed cases, which means that we are looking towards a peak starting in April, probably around the middle of April. And we're still in that climb of the curve. If we all continue to do what we've been asked to do in terms of hand washing, not attending mass gatherings, keeping that two metres of physical distance and the respiratory hygiene of catch it, bin it and kill it, then we can hope that we will hammer down the peak and reduce the number of people dying. Part of the hammering down also means that the peak will expand. So we're anticipating at the moment that the peak will start middle to potentially end of April and last well into June and July. We know from happened back at the 1918 pandemic is cities that broke lockdown too quickly got a second peak. And that second peak was much, much higher than the first peak. It was also higher than what had been predicted. So there is a real risk that if people do ignore the guidance, that we will see many, many more deaths. In the context of Birmingham, the modelling suggests that we will see up to eight and a half, possibly 9,000 deaths through the coronavirus outbreak if people do not abide by the guidelines. If they don't do the social distancing, if they don't stop gathering together, then we are seeing 9,000 lives lost which don't need to be. And where we can avoid a risk, we should avoid that risk because even if that risk is small, it potentially is a life that's lost that could have been saved.
Very much, Justin. And I think you made a really valid point around the, particularly around the peak and also the fact that actually it is about trying to save as many lives as possible. Next, we're going to move on to councillor John Cotton. So John?
Evening, everybody. I'm councillor John Cotton. I'm the Cabinet Member for Social Inclusion, Community Safety and Equalities. There are some issues that arise certainly from a community safety and cohesion perspective here. We are aware of the fact there's been significant media interest in situations that have involved in Birmingham over the last week or so. And we also know that there are some people out there, particularly on the far right, who have been using these as a way of trying to divide communities. And I think we need to be careful in terms of how we address that and actually challenge some of those really divisive narratives. We're really absolutely behind trying to build that cohesion between communities and ensure that everybody understands what the guidelines are. And they're all working together as a city to meet the real challenge that we face in terms of this pandemic. And also, as has been said by Shabana earlier on, we're really mindful of the need to protect our frontline staff here who are working in bereavement services. We certainly won't tolerate the situations where they are put at risk or subject to intimidation or anything of that nature. So it's really, from a cohesion perspective, it's just important to emphasise how we all need to work together around this. We will conquer this together and by working together and observing those guidelines and working as one city.
Very much, John, for your contributions there. Next, we're going to turn to Birmingham Muslim Burial Council. And we've got Gulam Taladdeya. I think I've got such a name right there, Gulam. Do you want to join the conversation?
Hello. Good evening, everyone, and Assalamualaikum. I'm from the Muslim Burial Council of Birmingham. BMBC has regular interactions with faith reps across the country, including lead bodies in London, Manchester, through the National Burial Council, which is NBC, to help understand what is working well and where there are issues. The NBC is flagging these city councils to help overcome issues and avoid pitfalls. The other thing we understand and have emphasised, the importance of correctly using PPE, having the right facility and confirming the social distancing to help tackle the spread of the virus. Locally, BMBC has held two conferences, mid-March and end of March, for funeral directors and leaders of mosques in the West Midlands. There is, BMBC also launched a free service to undertake washing and shrouding of deceased during this crisis for funeral directors, organisations who are working with us. The NBC also liaises on a regular basis. I talk to all the hospital staff, bereavement staff on a daily basis where possible because they are extremely busy, registry office, hospital, mortuary staff, coroner's offices, on a regular basis to find out what is actually happening on the ground, including the cemeteries, try and help them wherever possible if there is any issue. So we're trying to gauge what is happening on the ground so that we can give the right information, the correct information to the funeral directors, what is happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gulam. So the next speaker is Shayk Azlam. If you can just speak to us from your perspective as well?
Everybody, Assalamualaikum. So I'm Imam at Gomgol Sharif Masjid in Birmingham. And I've been basically filtering the concerns of the community back to the council, people like councillor Sharon Thompson and Paul Lancaster and others, to engage between the community and the councillors themselves. So on the ground, I am trying to engage all of the mosques, trying to give them the correct concessions within the Islamic law regarding burial, regarding shrouding, washing, because the circumstances are very tough. And I've consulted Muslim scholars from the United Kingdom and all across the world, who've all agreed that if we don't have the correct PPE equipment and people are not trained within the PPE equipment, then we are allowed a concession not to shroud or to bathe if we feel that there is a risk of the infection being contagious to the living, for preserving the life of the living takes precedence over everything else. And also, we've been trying to source PPE equipment from across the world and across the United Kingdom with great difficulty. I mean, we've had a very hard time from certain wholesalers who've kind of really ramped up the prices to extortionate amounts like £15 a mask. And we've been facing these type of difficulties. So just yesterday or the day before, I was able to source 500 PPE FFP2 masks for Gomgol Sharif and others are still searching for them. So there's still issues that we're trying to work around with the community. So basically, I'm trying to filter the concerns of the community back to the authorities and make sure that there's a positive dialogue going on between.
Thank you very much for that. So before we move over to the questions from those that are listening in, we just wanted to take a few moments to discuss some of the areas where we think that actually yourselves, as those that are listening, can help the council with some of the challenges that we're facing to help us to make it operate a lot smoother. So I'm going to hand over to Paul Lancaster to talk about any of the particular challenges that we feel that you can help us with. Before I do that, I know that there's been some concerns around the numbers of people that can mourn at the funerals. So I just wanted to address that myself. So firstly, I would say that it was a difficult decision for us to make to get to the number six. I think that Paul has says that we took an internal decision, we looked at it about whether you could have good social distancing around the graveside and what was going to work well. And that's why we chose that particular number. And we feel that we're going to have to maintain that number because we have to consider the staff and we have to consider mainly making sure that we're not spreading the virus as such or we're not putting people at risk. I would prefer to have smaller numbers at the funerals if that means that can help us to have less funerals through Covid-19. We really need to observe the social distancing and we really need to all work together. And although this is difficult, it's something that we feel that we needed to do in terms of everybody's safety. So I shall hand over to Paul now so that he can talk about any challenges that we feel that you guys can help us with also.
Okay, thank you Sharon. I think that the sorts of challenges that we probably need to ensure is that there's the number one is that there is good communication between funeral directors and the council. Because if anyone is going to put forward any sort of proposal to do anything and react, we would like them to speak to us beforehand. Should always do things and work things out in the way that is going to be engaging community rather than actually creating added issues. That's probably the first one I'd say, big on community. There were, there are significant issues nationally with the production of body bags. Body bags are running out nationally now. I heard a wonderful suggestion at a meeting I was at earlier today, which Justin had organised with faith group leaders about the potential for the community perhaps to make them locally. Now, that's fine as long as they can be made to a particular standard that doesn't allow any sort of danger to anyone who then has to use them. And that's one of the big, big things. They've got to be made to a particular standard, which we need to find and address. It is essential though, that I know that there have been people making fibre masks and this sort of thing that as a thing that I think we'd never say don't wear masks, but we would say be aware that if you do things like that and you make masks and they are not actually capable of stopping the virus and fibre masks won't be, you may be giving misguided, people feel misguided and they're able then to work in the community or do it during their job with that mask on and it still exposes them to risks. So be careful around that. I think the big thing about numbers, there are local authorities who have gone all the way and decided to ban everyone from funerals. We do not see that as something we want to be, where we want to be. However, if we get instructed that that's where we've got to be, then we will do that. We don't want to, but we will have to do it. And I think that very much depends on the public and people being responsible about how they attend funerals because that's one of the big issues. In terms of registration process, which has got issues, the new process has caused problems. I've had significant staff sickness. I would like probably to just advise you, we have got an urgency procedure in place for all death registrations and death certificates. The best way to do that is not via the phone, we'll phone you back, but is to email on the email address we've released and actually say, urgency, religious burial, and that will help us. We'll get back to you. They are treated in priority. There are also issues, and I'd advise the community on this, that where someone dies in the community and there is no clear indication it has been a Covid-19 death, then the coroner is duty bound to carry out investigations to find out what has caused that death. With the number of deaths that are going through, probably around this time of year, we're between 30 and 50% up on the number of deaths that we would expect. That is taking a little bit longer than we would like and I'm sure than the coroner would like. That's due to the volume of work. So please be patient. We'll try and get things done as quickly as we can and to the right level. And we'll help you where we can. Those are the sort of problems that we have. Those are the sorts of issues we're trying to deal with. We are also increasing the numbers of burial slots available and we will be extending our hours. We have not seen the requirement yet, but we think we're just a bit in front of the curve. We think it's about to happen in terms of additional deaths requirements and additional burials. On the other side of it, in terms of cremations, we are not seeing the demand at all. We have plenty of slots available this week for people if that was wanted. So we are also working all weekend on burials so that there are the, there's the capability to book burials through the weekend as well. But as I say, please be patient, please go along with us and we will get to you as soon as we can.
Thank you, Paul. I am going to come back to you.
I thought you might.
I've had a couple of emails come through today asking about the amount of mortuary space we've got and actually about having more mortaries in mosques grounds. Can you just talk a little bit around that and the council?
What we've looked at, we've got an excess deaths plan in the bereavement services and we looked at this in the middle of last week. It is certainly the case that funeral directors and hospitals are becoming very full with regards to the numbers of deaths that are taking place and their mortuary. Hospitals can only release bodies when the coroner is satisfied that the cause of death is clear. And we become involved, if you like, after the coroner has agreed that the cause of death is clear and we can, that a burial or cremation can take place. We saw that there was this problem in funeral directors' capacity. We've seen that there's a problem with the hospitals. So we are in the process of putting in an additional temporary mortuary, which will be enough for, it's actually more, what I would call is it's a, rather than a mortuary, there are no post-mortems there. There's nothing like that going on. It is purely for body storage. And that should be in place by the weekend. That is designed to increase capacity in the system to allow, after the coroner is, all about after the coroner has released the body and to have additional capacity there. We will notify everyone as soon as that is in place so that the funeral directors are aware so that if there are issues on capacity, they can then deal with that. I would advise against large temporary structures at the moment unless we can actually come out and assess the site and everything else because there are likely to be issues with local residents if that doesn't happen.
Thank you very much, Paul. Now, before I hand over the chair, Justin, I'm going to call you back in. Is there anything else you want to add before we go to the questions?
I think the only thing to add in is just to reinforce this point. These are difficult decisions in difficult times. However, the decisions we have made and continue to make are for the fundamental reason to try and save and protect life for the living. And although that means that there are difficult changes that we all have to adopt, they are done to reduce the loss of life and the unnecessary sickness, illness and death that might occur if we don't. It's really important colleagues understand that we will, and we do anticipate this outbreak is going to go on for several months, possibly well into the summer and potentially into the autumn. And that every step that we take to reduce death and the spread of the virus will save lives.
Thank you very much, Justin. Well, I'd just like to thank everybody on the panel for their contributions to this evening's discussion, but also for all the work that you've been doing in this area when it comes to bereavement services across the year. But also since it's been in this, you know, since Covid-19, it's been very difficult, challenging for all of us. And I think everybody, including the funeral directors and the faith-based community groups, all of us pulling together. It's really appreciated. So now I'm going to hand over the chair to Cameron Fazzal. So thank you very much. And I would just like to say thank you to Bayou Trust for helping us to prepare this evening. So now Cameron, it's over to you.
Thank you to the panel for giving him a brief introduction and everything. I've been picking up some of the questions. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to, some of those questions have already been answered. So I won't go through all of them, but I've picked up and I've tried to also group two or three so that we can answer as many. So one of the questions is what plans are you making to deal with mental trauma the families are facing who are not able to visit their families in hospital at the end of life and then not able to have any form of closure by not being able to attend the funeral? And also, is there any plans to provide trauma training for people like imams and other faith leaders? Because they're normally also at the frontline and then having to deal with bereaved families.
I'm clearly aware of this issue and challenge. There's work going on in partnership between the council and the Clinical Commissioning Group, the NHS, on working with Creeds Bereavement Support and other voluntary sector partners to both look at the capacity we have based against the projected numbers that we're going to get to. Secondly, what can be provided in terms of training to volunteers and members of faith communities that will be experiencing bereavement in ways that we just haven't experienced in this country for many, many years? Thirdly, there is also national discussions and I know councillor Thompson's been taking some of those up as well for us with some of the MPs in terms of the national ask of getting some additional training resources out there across the country about supporting people in their role, supporting the bereave. The final element I just flag is that we need to help people talk about death. It's been a campaign for many years to get people to have more conversations about death before it happens and to recognise that it is part of the journey of life. And when it comes, it is hard, but it is part of that journey. And it's really hard because that national conversation hasn't really got traction. So we're now kind of trying to do that at pace to help people work through those conversations. Many of the people, the healthcare professionals have not experienced anything like this. Certainly when I trained as a doctor and I've seen many deaths through my career, it's been a privilege to be part of those and to support people to die with dignity and compassion. And every healthcare professional does that. That's what we're trained to do. So if family can't be there, then we do and we will spend time sitting with someone so people don't die alone. And there are already clear stories and testimony from London about what's going on. But we need to also consider the volunteers who are going into work in the Nightingale Hospital around that as well. And the final point just to flag is we are working with the combined authority about the spiritual support to the Nightingale Hospital because that will be a significant ask and to help think through how do we boost that and support that from across the region and across multiple different faiths as well.
You know, we need to do something drastically at the registry office because I've had even the hospital staff telling me that they couldn't get hold of anybody at the registry office. The one telephone number you are given is constantly ringing, nobody answers. And emails, they send emails after emails and they don't get any reply. And they were more, what I did sustain from Sandwell system is that Sandwell have got a better system where the hospital sends them a list of all these, all the deceased bodies in the mortuary to the registry office and the coroner's office. And then the registry office sends back, okay, they tick the boxes, which ones are done, paperwork is done. So then the hospital then chases up the funeral director and says, can you check your emails? Your paperwork is all done at the registry office. Can you pick up your bodies? This is working quite well in Sandwell, which I think should be implemented in Birmingham because at the present, our system at the registry office is not fit for purpose as far as I'm concerned.
Paul, I don't know if you want to address that before we hand back to the chair?
Registration is a difficult scenario. I did mention that in my introduction, that the new process has caused some problems. The way registration works is we have to have qualified staff. I've negotiated, as I said to you, I've got a lot of sickness, but I've negotiated additional resources coming from another authority. The scale of the work in Birmingham is many far times more than Sandwell, which has a system that works for them. We are trying to work it as best we can. We are going into backlogs. We had backlogs for a while and we're trying to do that. We've increased storage capacity. We've, well, we are in the process of increasing that by having 500 bodies being capable of being stored after they've been released by the coroner. So it's got to be after that. And then we are also working on improving all of the processes we're doing, putting more people in where we can. But in working what we've got, we are on an emergency plan footing. So we work in shifts because if I have one member of my staff who goes down with Covid-19 and I've got the whole of my staff there, they're all out of the office. So I've got to work in a different way. We are focusing on emails, contacts as the urgent ones there and we're prioritising the urgent ones. As I said, there have been delays in the, in getting them through from the coroner's side where they're community deaths as well because they haven't been seen by anybody. That is causing a particular issue. What may well happen when the regional facility is up, that it's likely that deaths in the community, the deceased will be moved to the regional facility and will only be released after we know what the cause is, the coroner's satisfied, and then it will come to us. As I said to you as well, we are not, we're not having a day off this week, even though it's an Easter holiday. The registration service will be working all weekend. We are doing what we can and we are trying to get it done. Every time we get chased by a person who's already in the email system, that increases the work. that increases the work, because that's got to be checked. Every single email has to be checked to make sure we've dealt with it. There has to be some patience, we are doing the best we can.
Okay, all right, I understand that. I appreciate all your, what you do, I know you've been working tirelessly, Paul, I know that, more than anybody else. And I appreciate what you're trying to do. All it is is because I'm getting frustrated, because I get all the phone calls from funeral directors and families, so you can understand my frustration.
Absolutely, and we're all trying to do a good job, and I think that that's something that has to be reflected. Some funeral directors though do not put urgent religious burial on the system. And so they go into the non-urgent and then they're saying, we have said it's urgent and they haven't. And that's part of the issue. So if we can get funeral directors to make sure, or that when they talk to the families or Imams, anyone who is there talking to a family who's lost a loved one, that have you put the right things in the email? And we have advised that on the system we published.
Thank you, thank you, Paul.
You mentioned obviously that you're making changes to the way bodies are released, et cetera. Can you tell us a little bit more about what those changes are, about releasing bodies quicker? And also, based on the latest forecast of deaths, do we have enough burial plots in the region? And if we don't, what provisions are we pursuing?
So the second one is very simple. Birmingham has more than enough capacity to take the whole of the West Midlands in terms of burial plots at the rate of deaths that are being forecast currently. So there's very much sufficient capacity. In Sutton New Hall alone, we have close on 6,000 Muslim burial spaces. So we know that one there and we've got 6,000 other up at Sutton New Hall for non-Muslim. So we have quite a capacity. The council has invested significantly in this over the years. In relation to the coronial service, the changes that are being made in the coronial service, there's two stages to it. The coroner has responsibility to ensure the who, what, when, why in terms of the death. Who's died, when did they die, how did it happen and what was the cause? What was the issue that, was it unnatural basically, is the sort of thing there? So the coroner has to satisfy herself of all of that. There's been guidance around COVID-19, which is now considered to be a natural causes death. Until that came in, that wouldn't have been, it would have been done separately, because it was an unknown illness before. So what we now have is that we've got all of that in there. The coroner would, when she's satisfied that there is a COVID-19 death, the body can be released. What she's also doing is that because of the increase in deaths and the increase of deaths in the community, that may be eased a little bit with the Nightingale Hospital proposal, because there'll be more bed space for people who are currently in the community. And that may well help in terms of knowing the cause of death and for quicker release from the coroner. So that's the first stage. We can't do the registration until the coroner releases and gives us a form to that. The change in the registration service is there's no longer a need for face-to-face registration. But it has to be done on the phone and the registrar, who signs off the death certificate, has to speak to the individual who's reporting it and that has to be there. If an individual member of the family is unable to do, because they're not well or anything else of that, who should normally be reporting it, the next of kin, then other persons can be nominated to do that for that. And there's set ones out, including funeral directors, so they can be nominated for that. So we're able to take that registration from them. So what we're doing is we're prioritising, as I say, all of the religious burials, whatever faith, that need to be done in time, in quick time. And then the second thing we do then is we look at all the others. We will phone back normally, if you email, we phone back and let you know. A lot of work is being done from home. The phone system at the registry office leaves a little bit to be desired, but we're trying to improve it the whole time so that it can possibly be forwarded on and dealt with remotely. But that's not been as easy as, there's not been a technical solution we've been able to do to sort that fully. So we're putting additional resource in, we've streamlined the process and we're doing different things like that. That's what we're doing. It has caused problems learning the new process and that's delayed some of those things and created a bit of a backlog for which I can only apologise for.
Paul, you mentioned, one of the questions was about the coroner. And you mentioned you sometimes need to wait for the coroner. And one of the questions is that there's a delay at the coroner's office as they are also limited to working from home. And also there's less communications on the phone. So what plan is there to increase the capacity for the coroner's office?
Okay, we've already put staff into the coronial service at the request of the coroner. And today I've asked for additional staff to go in as well. So there's resources that are being reallocated from other council services into the coroner's service. They have to have a little bit of training, but then they can get that done. It's the processing and making sure we can release the loved one quickly and efficiently, but making sure we've done it correctly, because there's an important legal requirement for that to be done in a proper way. But that's very much the coroner's area of responsibility. The Birmingham City Council, although the coroner comes under their guise, does not interfere in any way in any of the coronial processes, because that's an independent judicial function. But we do everything while after the coroner has released the person.
There's a question whether there's any data being recorded of number by death and whether it's proportional and whether there's a breakdown of ethnic minority, ethnicity or by faith and whether we can get access to this data.
So the answer is no. It's something I've been lobbying for for some time and have been asking colleagues like councillor Thompson and councillor Cotton and others to continue to lobby nationally. It's a national decision not to give the local directors of public health access to the full death data for us to be able to analyse it and look at it. Certainly the feedback I've had nationally is that there isn't any evidence of ethnic, abnormal ethnic distribution or in the deaths that we've had so far. But we have to take into account that we know that this disease disproportionately kills the elderly and those with chronic ill health. And that in some of our communities, we know that those communities have more chronic diseases like severe diabetes, coronary heart disease, severe respiratory issues linked to smoking and other diseases. So you would expect to see more deaths in those communities anyway. But it is something that I continue to lobby very hard to get access to that data, because then I can do the analysis and look at it. And the challenge we have in Birmingham is that because we are such a large local authority, the value of having the data across the whole city is quite limited. Whereas if you're in Sandwell or Solihull, it doesn't make a huge difference across 200,000 people if it's in the north or the south of the borough, whereas for Birmingham it would. But bluntly, I'm not winning that battle at the moment, so I've asked politicians to help lobby for me for at least Birmingham to get a special case.
If I could just come in, I'll be raising this point again with the ministers responsible in the communities and local government department who are leading on funerals. It's been raised before and I'm due another phone call to keep chasing on this. The only thing I would say about the numbers, obviously there's a lot of anecdotal evidence and various sections of the press, including the ethnic minority press, have covered this idea that there's an over-representation of deaths in the South Asian community and in places like the West Midlands and Birmingham in particular. And just to add to what Justin has said about the higher incidences of issues such as severe diabetes and coronary heart disease, we are also a community that has many more intergenerational households, so where you have children, their parents and their grandparents all living in a household. So the possibility of infection occurring from the youngsters maybe bringing it into the home whilst they were still at school before the schools closed. I would expect to see that reflected in the figures as well. But we continue to push national government to allow us some race and segregated data so we can start tracking some of these things more fully.
There's a question on community volunteers, because quite a few of the mosques and funeral directors have been very active in training lots of volunteers around funeral rites and all sorts. So the question is that can trained community volunteers support staff at the central mortuary to help ease capacity as well as potentially carry out religious rites such as body washing, et cetera?
Well, I'm Tilaja from BMBC. This proposal for central mortuary, we already put that proposal forward to the committee that is organising the central mortuary. The issue is, we haven't heard anything back or there hasn't been anything moving forward saying that whether that is possible or not. Though we were planning, or we were hoping at BMBC that that would reduce a lot of hassle in the community. Plus we would have a centralised place where all the deaths would be dealt with, reducing all infection. There's a lot of, we had a good chat with Maula and Mahmoud Islam as well regarding this, that this will be the best practice, but unfortunately, because it hasn't been forthcoming, all these mosques have taken up onto themselves to have the freezers and that, to make provision for themselves, basically knowing that it's going to escalate.
Just make one comment if I may. If any bodies are stored in freezers, they will require human tissue authority licensing for that premises. New guidance has come out today actually from them about licensing requirements. But people should be aware, if body storage is chilled, then there isn't an HTA licence requirement unless you're doing some kind of, any sort of sampling of the body, which is obviously not something that funeral directors do. But if you freeze bodies, there is a human tissue authority licence requirement, just so people are aware.
And Paul, while you're on the line, sorry, I want to come back to you. It's a question about graves and because most graves are closed graves, that will graves be dug in time to meet the capacity?
Unequivocally, what we're trying to do is dig the graves the day before we require them and that sort of thing. But we've put extra capacity in terms of resource. I've put another six people across the city today and we are hoping to get up to another 15 or 20 coming in through arrangements that we've got with other bodies that will actually take us on from there. So one of our contractors. So that will allow us actually to do even more shift work and to do the much longer hours that we will need. At the moment, we've been working with our own staff and sickness rates are changing on a daily basis. And obviously if someone has COVID-19 symptoms, then they have to self-isolate. We can't use them on-site. But we have got enough staff that we're working at the moment who are digging graves and who are meeting the demand that's there.
My next question's for Justin Varney and for Sheikh Aslam. I know in our weekly mosque meeting with Justin, this question's been brought up a number of times. But can we get the views of Justin and Sheikh Aslam? Starting with Justin, around what your opinions are on the washing and the bathing of a body of COVID-19?
So there is guidelines on the personal protective equipment that is involved if you are going to wash the body. I think both the WHO guidelines and our own reinforce that there is a risk attached to this. And if it is within a context where there is religious exemption to allow it not to happen, that would remove that risk. This is a space in which we should do anything that we possibly can to remove the risk of spreading this disease. And if you are going to continue with washing the body, it should be with the smallest number of people possible who have the appropriate PPE. But they have to be extremely precise in their use of their PPE, because there is a risk attached to it. And that's a risk that can be avoided. But I do understand that the scholars are divided to some extent on whether this can be exempt completely or it can be reduced. I know that some of the masjids that have spoken to me earlier on in this outbreak, I very quickly advised not to use hoses or showers to wash, to reduce the risk of any droplet spread as much as possible. But I do recognise that this is one of the areas where the scholars are somewhat divided in the views on what can be exempted. However, it does present a risk and therefore anything that we can do to prevent risk, I think is something that should be seriously considered in the nature of the number of deaths that we're trying to avoid.
Justin, if I can just come in there. I believe one of the reasons why the scholars are divided on the matter is because of the mixed information that they're receiving from the various bodies. Some are hearing that there is a risk, others are hearing that there's no risk. Others are hearing that certain bodies are being released in body bags. Some hospitals are not releasing in body bags, et cetera. So based upon this information, the scholars are divided. Whereas if there was a unified, very clear guidelines in that, indeed there is a risk and therefore the bathing and shrouding, if it can be avoided, then the scholars should consider that. So I believe that if the scholars were given very, very clear guidelines, they would have actually presented the exceptional rulings of allowing for both the bathing and shrouding to be suspended. Now, because there's been kind of different information relayed to them, this is why we have the different rulings. Whereas I believe that if a unified ruling of a certain risk was presented to them, then they would have been very unified in suspending both the bathing and the shrouding. And as you clearly said that, and I've heard that from certain funeral directors and mosques, that they've been advised not to use the hose and to use the least amount of people. But those people have to be extremely cautious. The entire area has to be disinfected before and after. And after speaking to a professional PPE trainer, she told me that our current facilities are really not prepared for that, number one. And number two, she also told me that the people who are currently being prepared for PPE training after half a day's training are not really trained. They've just picked up a little bit of experience, so they are actually putting their lives to risk. Now, for a scholar to see all of these dimensions, the only ruling that a scholar would present after seeing all of these dimensions is that we have to use the exceptional ruling of concession in suspending both the bathing and the shrouding.
No, I absolutely appreciate that and I am trying as much as possible to be clear, certainly in a Birmingham context, and that is the challenge. I know many of the scholars are outside of the city, so get different points. I should just share, I did raise this issue over the weekend with the World Health Organisation. I have a colleague that I've worked with in the past there, that I was concerned that WHO were not having the faith-based conversations about this and the current guidance on washing the body was inadequate. So she did assure me she would take that up. She's quite senior, so hopefully that will also pick up a national conversation. But I think from the context of Birmingham, just to be really clear, I view that washing of the body presents a risk and a risk that can be avoided. And I would strongly urge the scholars to support reflection of the religious texts to be able to allow that avoidance of a risk in order to save lives in the current context.
If it's possible for yourself to actually address the scholars with your concern being the public health head in Birmingham, I think that would be really appreciated so that they can hear directly from yourself what the situation on the ground is. Now, the scholars are picking up information from certain funeral directors, from perhaps people outside of the city, et cetera, et cetera. And this is why they have mixed legal rulings that they're coming forward with. Whereas if they hear it from yourself directly, I think that would really help in actually suspending both the shrouding and the washing.
More than happy to set that up, working with you and the Bahu Trust, we can arrange that.
Thanks.
Sheikh Aslam, I'll get in touch with you and I'll arrange that, we'll put something together. Okay, Justin, last question, because I'm aware that we're almost coming to prayer times. And then I'll hand back to councillor Thompson. If you can answer quickly... If you can answer quickly, in your opinion, what would be a good qualified PPE person?
I think someone who's had significant training and also been observed putting on their PPE and taking it off and that it's been disposed of appropriately and that they're able to answer clear questions and demonstrate their understanding of the risk. I think in this situation, simply getting an hour-long tutorial or a lecture is not appropriate. We should be doing everything we can to limit the risk in the context of what is a very serious disease.
So just on closing, I would just like to say thank you to everyone on the panel for all your contributions again. And also for the Bahu Trust for actually helping us to host this tonight. I'd like to thank everyone who's logged in and I hope that you found it useful and that we've managed to answer some of your questions. It's been useful for me as the cabinet member, listening to some of that. And there's a few things I know that myself and people like Shabana and John will take back because there's going to be some lobbying that we need to do in our remit as well. If you've got anything else that you need from us, please just get in contact with us. I know this is really difficult times, but I'd like to think that once we get past Covid nineteen, that we can continue with this relationship between the council and the community yourselves to move forward. So we can try and make this service the best that it can for those that are going through such a difficult time. So I'd just like to wish you all well on your evenings. I know everyone's going into their prayers soon and I'd just like to thank everybody for their time. Thank you very much.